Aunt Patty's on the square. Park County's oldest antique mall with 22 years on the southeast corner of the square. We have 25 dealers who take great pride in stocking and maintaining their booths. In 7,500 square feet, you can find almost everything from the smallest penknife to great jewelry, vintage coins, sports cards, dishes like Grandma had, all the way to a large piece of furniture. We're open seven days a week. Our hours are Monday through Saturday, 10 to 5, and Sunday noon to 5.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. Your idea like it is? Everybody got their copy of the minutes from the May 5th? April 26th, May 5th meetings? The motion to accept them has written them corrected in a book because a cop did something. Was backwards. He was the operator, right?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
On favor?
Aight, aight.
Thank you. Claims and warrants end of month April $72,399.37. The May 29th made $206,405.59.
That should be 19th, May 19th.
That's probably a gift for Tressna. Okay. And payroll warrants for 428,55, 512, 519 in the amount of $34,024.39.
I'll make a motion to accept the claims and warrants and payroll warrants.
Second? Thank you. On favor? And bank reconciliations? For the end of month April 2022, utilities $2,907.97. The town $849,325.84. Payroll $2,911.47. And customer deposit $33,215.
Motion.
Second. On favor? Thank you. You want to hand me down this way? Let's go around the room. Cindy?
I really don't have anything probably that other people are going to report on, but I was going to ask about a follow-up if Scott's been able to look at property boundaries. You were going to check on first mediation.
You'll be here in a bit.
I sent just an email because they're very much in favor of the project, but they really need to meet with him and figure out exactly where it's going to go. And like you said, who owns that? Before they could commit to any kind of in-kind match.
Yeah, and he just was, since we didn't have all of that decided and fully talked about, he will not be able to meet the deadline to apply for this year's home loan. So he wasn't sure if he mentioned that, that he wouldn't be able to apply this year, so it would be 20.
Yeah, I think he sent us an email.
It had to be by May 9th, but he didn't know if it would open up a second round. If not, then it would go into 23, but they thought if they could get a start on it, they could have everything.
Yeah. And I reminded him that Jay was probably the only one that was technically on the board at the time.
Last time?
But they had done a lot of these things. So it might not be a bad idea to refresh everybody.
Yeah, we thought he was just going to kind of talk about it, and then he had all these ideas. Definitely still interested. Diana?
Okay, May 10th, the park board installed new stainless steel military emblems at the Veterans Memorial. And they look very nice. If you haven't had a chance to go see them, they look really, really nice. And I hope we're done for a while because those concrete medallions, they just crumbled apart. And so the next step at the memorial is to wash the concrete. It's amazing how black it is. And we're hoping that the utility department can use their back truck, the back trailer, to help us wash that off a little bit because we want to restain the motto red and the circle around it red. We have the stain and everything we need. And then the next step is to replace the flags. We have the flags, but we're just waiting until closer to Memorial Day because we don't want the weather to beat up the new ones. On May 12th, we met with Chris Clark and Chris O'Brien. Chris Clark is the cameraman who installed the cameras at Delphi after the girls were murdered. That case is still unsolved. But Chris O'Brien is in charge of the emergency management system for Park County. And they both know a lot about cameras. And so we kind of did a phone call conference with John Cook, and he helped us through it. And so we sort of made, sort of kind of, made some decisions about where cameras might go. It's not written in stone yet, and the way I understand it, John is going to meet with them again.
I did.
You did meet with them? So did you make any concrete decisions about?
No, we just went over, basically to write this grant, they had to, they needed some verbiage from me as to how we would utilize them.
Great.
And that sort of thing. So we didn't change anything that you guys had planned already. He just wanted me to say, yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay. Well, we appreciate your help. Sort of as, like I said, this isn't written in stone, but we talked about a security camera on the railroad bridge, one facing east and one facing west. We talked about them being placed at the ballparks. The last we talked with them, it was, they were talking about putting them on the corners of the restrooms, both at the baseball diamond and the softball diamond. And they thought they could put them on the southwest and southeast corner. And the southwest corner, is that being clear there? And they thought they could get them to be directed in several different places that way. And that way it would allow to see just about everything. And at one point in time, they talked, we went over to the police station. They talked about boring into the road to the baseball diamond. I said, I'm just not in favor of that. I said, I think we need to stay on the east side of Jackson Street and not bore into the road. I'm just thinking that's just a lot of extra that we don't need to go through. But I may be all wrong there, but I feel like that we can do what we need to do by staying on the east side of Jackson Street. Okay? They were talking about boring under the street there south of the police station and going under that street into the pole, onto the pole that's at the baseball diamond. And I just didn't, I don't know, maybe I'm not seeing it straight, but that's what I thought. Then they felt, at Open Cemetery, we could place one at the chapel and have it facing north, northeast. The police station, they felt like the utility office would be included. And there was a lot of discussion about ADT because we already have ADT at the utility office. Would we need to continue ADT?
We would need to continue the alarm part at least.
Okay, that's what.
That was the question that was brought to me was, do we get an insurance rate cut by having ADT? Or could they do something else?
That I can answer. I could find out though.
Just remember, we're getting, we're hoping to get a grant. So there won't be any expense to the town for this.
So there are other options than ADT, you're saying?
Well, Bert is still in the exploratory phase, but he just ran that behind me. Do we have to have ADT? Is that like?
No, we don't have to have them.
And then the only other thing that we talked about that you didn't cover was there wasn't anything about the community center.
That's true. Now, there are cameras in here. But not outside.
No, there's none outside.
Right, but there are cameras inside here. So maybe that's something to consider is the community center. Okay, the other thing was Reader Park at the boat ramp and the north parking area where the camping is. And he even, John felt that it would be a good idea to have a camera at US 36 and downtown intersection. And then also Jackson Street and US 36 here at the firehouse. He felt it would be a good idea to have one there. And that was the other thing, was the question about the utility office. Let me put community center outside. Are you going to be talking with them again, John?
I'm sure I will.
I talked to him today.
Okay, did you? Good.
And keep in mind that this is a dream big scenario.
Yeah.
If you could dream it up, how do you want it to look? This may not be the end result. So my thought process was we kept, capture that intersection downtown. That covers the largest portion of the covered bridge traffic. I mean, shouldn't we ever have it down there? It would be recorded. Same way, probably the busiest intersection in towns right here, Jackson 36. Which we thought that, we was talking about putting cameras on the firehouse anyway because of the incident with the door and just, I think it's a good idea to secure your assets. But using one of those cameras to capture that intersection too. I know the county uses the one in Velmore a lot for like crash investigations and stuff because it's all reported. It just aids in that sort of stuff.
There was a lot of discussion about where the information would be stored and who would have access to it. And we all agreed that it should be stored at the police department and John should have access. Because we don't need 20 people having access to all that. Because then we're going to have, well, hey, on this camera, I saw so-and-so, you know? And they look pretty shady, so we need to, you know, we need to limit the amount of access to the cameras.
Can that grant include indoor cameras?
I would imagine so.
And after it's all said and done, is there like a monthly fee per camera?
Nope.
Because we could get rid of our ADT quarterly bill, here and there.
That's what I was thinking. And there's no monthly subscription fee. It goes to DVR and then John can see, you can see some of it live, right?
Which, it doesn't have to be just solely me. My concern initially was.
Your department. Yeah, it's your department.
Yeah. We didn't need, and don't take this the wrong way, we didn't need 20 people at home dispatching the police department everywhere they need to be because they see somebody walking a dog that they don't know. That's not really, I mean, the cameras aren't necessarily in my eyes. It's not, it's set behind a screen and watch, and everybody knows.
And how the park board got involved with this was because of the fact that we had wanted cameras at Reader Park first. Because that's where we had damage there and at railroad bridge. So that's how the park board became involved, and then Cindy found this grant.
And this grant covers all of the equipment?
Yes, it would be no expense to the town at all for any purchases. So that's, so I guess, that's what we have to report right now. Do you girls have anything?
My question was just the internet service and if it's Wi-Fi and if it's going to be a service internet cost to town? That was the question.
They're going to set it up as a Wi-Fi, so there's no additional internet cost. So like down at the railroad bridge, they can tap into the Wi-Fi that's at the treatment plant and wipe it off of that, so there's no additional internet required. The thing that Chris kind of coached me on, because this grant is due June 1st. And we have to have at least one quote to have a dollar figure. So that's the Chris that came here last week and met. He said, as we talked and, you know, John mentions some things, and it's like, you know, let's just do one upgrade system for everything and replace potentially like the ADT that you said is kind of clunky anyway.
Well, it's very outdated and it's costly.
Yeah, so we can save some money with that and think of this as more of a town-wide project, not necessarily just park board. So it's helping John, it's helping park board, it's helping you guys on your assets and things. Because the application would go in under the town of Monizuma. The thing that Chris told me today was the cameras that the gentleman was proposing, he's not able to get them. So he's going to have to replace it with a different type of camera. So he's going to look at what that is and then give an estimate on Monday.
Okay.
So he'll have some numbers on Monday.
Okay.
So this process for this, it's a Homeland Security grant. You kind of do a proposed project, so kind of a mini-application. You submit that, and if everything looks good, then they'll invite you back to do the full application. So they may be reaching out to you, Kathy, for some town numbers, you know, information and stuff to do that in the next week or so.
Do you have any questions on that? I'll try to answer them.
And I, well, and the other thing with the town, we would need some assistance, like maybe with some of the poles and.
Right.
And things like that. Yeah.
Maintain.
Yeah, help them get attention with all this stuff. But other than that, there really wouldn't be an expense to the town.
The first step, produce a paperwork and turn it in by?
June 1st.
June 1st, and then what kind of wait time is there before it happens?
Chris did not give me a timeframe for a proposal. I don't think it's an extremely long time. Because they'll want to get you through the system, but I don't know if they base it on how many apps and how long it takes them to get through everything. His, I guess, idea to us and why he suggested this proposal is this particular group in Homeland Security liked to get cameras. So it's right in their wheelhouse of what they like to award grants for. The grant itself is a max of $150,000. I think what our project, even if you did everything, might come in around 40 to 50. And again, if we don't think we need that much, we could pare it down and we'll see when we get the proposal on Monday.
Yeah, great. And I appreciate Cindy's help and John's help and the two Chris's help and because we would have never been this far. Okay, we'll let you know more as we, information comes. Then the other thing is, we did not get the AARP grant for the railroad bridge improvements. So we'll keep seeking funds other places. And then July 4th at 11:00 a.m. is the veterans, the memorial service at the Veterans Memorial. And then I was wondering, Jay, have you heard anything from the Rose-Holman students about the flag?
I got an email from them last week, and they're supposed to get ahold of me this week with their final presentation. But I don't have any more dates than that. He's hoping to have it done this, do the presentation this week that I haven't heard from him, so I'm guessing that's not going to happen.
I just wondered when their school is out. About it, I'm close. And I think.
They'll have something by the time school gets out if they want to.
Yeah, they won't have the grant.
I think that's all I've got, Jay.
Thank you.
Final step in the cemetery project. I went to Clint Library today and used their ancestry. Did some more research. The girls as a utility officer trained last week. I've got some stuff to talk to Kathy about when she gets a chance, which I know she's crazy busy. Going to cemetery on Monday, walk some of those stones that I want to look at. And other than that, run the last reports and I'm done. I want to thank you guys again, Kathy, for thinking of me when that job came open.
Thank you for all your help.
Five more days.
Sounds like school.
It does, only one more Monday.
Well, and I'll just make a comment. I think what the town and Terry has done with that have inspired other communities to really. I've given your name out.
You got calls from Rockville.
Yeah, I was going to say, Rockville is a lot.
A lot of people still have rolodex index cards.
I'll stand up. My name is Thomas Hargissey. I'm here tonight to tell you about an event. The Park Trails Alliance and Vermillion Trails Alliance groups are planning and to ask for permission, reservation, and talk about some ideas for the event and get feedback on those. I've talked to Cindy and Diana about this, Kathy some, but I'm involved in, plus you, I'm involved in both the park and Vermillion Trail groups, like I said. Both groups are trying to increase awareness, membership, engagement. Basically, they're trying to be a little more proactive about letting the communities know what they're doing, what they're up to, what their mission is. And I was going to both meetings and I was hearing, you know, some of the same desires expressed in both groups. And we also talked about maybe doing an event. And so the Vermillion Trails Alliance, which I'm sure you're aware, has some brand-new trail that's being opened up this year on the Vermillion side, well, it's already open, of the pedestrian bridge. And the Park Trails group doesn't have any official trails in Monizuma, but there is a nice park. And then there's a pedestrian bridge over the Wabash, so there's a unique opportunity for people to run a 5K in both Park County and Vermillion County by crossing over the pedestrian bridge. So that's the idea for this event for the 5K in September. We're calling it "Over the River and Through the Woods" because that's exactly what it is. And we're wanting to have it start at Reader Park in Monizuma. We're working with Crossroads Timing and Event Management out of Terre Haute. They do 5Ks and triathlons all over the state and all over this area. So they're going to help us plan the logistics. So when we talk about like an actual route for the 5K, we're going to have to add some distance to Park County before we get to the bridge because there's not enough trail on the Vermillion County side. You have to have a 5K if you start at Reader Park. But Crossroads, that's their area of expertise. If they need to request a road closure or something like that for the day of the event, Crossroads will be asking the town about that. But for now, I wanted to make you aware of the event, kind of what our goals are for the event. We would like to reserve the shelter for that day, September 24th. Since Crossroads is taking on the logistics of the 5K, it's going to allow the rest of us to focus on making this an event for families. A lot of times when a family goes to the 5K, somebody runs, and then the spouse usually stays home with the kids. But we're hoping that the spouse will come with the kids, so they'll be able to learn more about both trails groups. And we're trying to draw them out there with things like, we're wanting to have a farmer's market. We'd like to have a food truck out there, possibly inflatables. And then yesterday, or two days ago at the Vermillion Trails group meeting, somebody brought the idea of asking the National Guard if they would want to come and bring their rock wall as another draw for families to get out here. So we're trying to not just have a race and get runners. We're trying to have a fun walk, and we're just trying to make this a fun event to celebrate both trails groups and also with it being here, even the town of Monizuma and this community. So I wanted to tell you about the event, make sure you're aware of it, kind of what our thought process is behind it. Not just to ask for a Red Stanford reservation and things like that, a sample of approval, but to get feedback. So Cindy's on the subcommittee, so she's already kind of in tune with the steps that we're going along. But, you know, we're hoping to get feedback from both trails groups and town of Monizuma as we plan this out. We've got big dreams for this going down the road, but, you know, this is our first year, so this is going to be kind of where we learn by trial and error. So we would like to reserve the shelter for September 24th. And then I wanted to ask about things like if we wanted inflatables. I talked to Kathy about this some. How would we pay for that? Would we pay, would it just be metered out if we get electricity? And if we had the rock wall from the National Guard, would we have to, I assume we'd have to do some kind of insurance? I don't know if they would have insurance.
I made a note to check with them.
What time, Thomas? What time does it start?
Well, this year, it's the first year, it's going to be a little bit different. At 9 o'clock, we're going to have a ribbon cutting on the Vermillion County side of the bridge for the Vermillion Trails Alliance. So at 9 o'clock, we're going to have some type of ceremony on the bridge over there. And to kind of celebrate that and mark that, the registration is going to open up probably at 8 or 8:30. But Ethan from Crossroads, and this is what he does full-time, he recommended, or he thought 10 o'clock was a good start time for the 5K. So we'll have the ribbon cutting at 9 o'clock. Hopefully, we'll have some dignitaries and people from the press out there. The registration will be going on at that time, and the race will actually start at 10 o'clock. The fun walk will start after that. And then we expect, if all my dreams come true, we have all these extra things for families to do out there. We still expect that about 1 o'clock, people are probably going to be ready to wrap it up and go home. So a general timeframe for the event is probably 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., possibly a little bit earlier. Some people like to get to the race well ahead of time and start stretching and jogging. Some people like to get to the race well ahead of time and start stretching and jogging. So maybe eight-thirty to one PM, something like that.
Any questions?
The only thing, the electric, we don't, we used to read the meter at the pavilion into somebody's name. They had to come in and pay a twenty dollar deposit and then we'll build. Then we just went to the five dollar deposit to reserve the pavilion. I don't know how you'd wanna handle that, whether you'd meter it or donate it.
They'll need restrooms too, so.
I would think bringing all the people in, I'm, I'd say donate.
I think it'd be awesome, probably draw a big crowd. A lot of people are doing that nowadays.
I'll make that a motion if we have to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's a motion.
Okay, second.
Okay, second. Donate fee and electricity.
And yeah, whatever.
You want John down there for.
Who's second?
Patrol. Well, probably figuring out car key.
And that's, uh, so with Ethan, Ethan's gonna have like the registration, it might technically be Ethan already, but Crossroads is gonna handle that. And it's part of like, all the information to communicate to participants, that's gonna be one of his questions that he asks. And he might also, he might recommend that we have porta potties in addition to the restrooms, depending on how many people register. Which if we do that, then obviously we can figure out that part of it, but um, yeah. Well, thank you, that's uh the status.
That's exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas.
Skip?
Uh, I don't have a whole lot, uh, seven runs for the month, I believe, uh, it's kind of blurry this morning when I got up on the road. Seventy-one for the year, June seventh, yeah. Six to eight is the open house, firehouse.
What day?
So, Ju- June seventh. It's a Tuesday.
I heard seventy-seven, I heard seven seventy-one.
Try to keep it easy for you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Got to all the time. And then, any word on the external fuel tank or?
No, I, I uh, let him uh voicemail to get again today, I don't, he's never gotten me any prices or anything like that.
That's it, is that all you have, thanks for everything?
I need to go back, why are we still fighting with the fuel tank? Can't we get a card and make it simple?
Well, we didn't get a card because we were on hold because of this.
Yeah, so we, well, we, one, we were.
Yeah, we're gonna, if we're gonna have to buy the tank, the pump, you know, all that if we do that, but I don't know what that cost is, that's the.
Yeah, that's why the card was on hold, because we were coming, we were checking into this route.
And I don't have no, I don't have no idea what he's, it's taken us long to get a quote. They told me within ten days I'd have it, and that's been a month ago, so.
But with everything though.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
And like prices are uh, twelve months, it's gotta be made out of gold probably. But it, it will not even need any extra secondary containment, it's a tank in a tank and twenty gallon a minute pump. I'll bug him again tomorrow and see what, what's going on, if I can find out. Thanks, yeah. John?
So I haven't figured out, in our, in the CAD recording system, I don't even know that it's capable, but. We have forty-eight calls slash traffic stops per month that shows activity for both, and I can't figure out how to say it. Eleven citations, one ordinance violation. The F-150's still having a EVAP canister, which for the fuel system. It's throwing a check engine light, they're telling me it's okay to drive, I just need to break down and leave it, well. That's difficult when you're a one-man band trying to coordinate all that. No, nobody wants to just come grab you, gas, five dollars a gallon, right?
Skip would.
They said he would.
Yeah, I'll skip it too.
Uh, we're still pushing policies out to the officers, to the, the policy manual, it's just a matter of pushing out for sign-offs. I decided not to push two hundred policies out in one shot, I'm just pushing like ten a week out, hoping that they actually read them. Nucor has firmly agreed at this point to donate five hundred dollars to the department, uh, daring them out and salt that out, so. Haven't seen anything writing, but I know that he needed the W nine from Kathy, is that what we had?
Yes.
We did receive the check from the LCC grant for two thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars to purchase the LiDAR unit. It's been ordered probably three, four weeks out still. And Kathy will have to help me here, but there's supposed to be a check issued for two thousand.
Got somewhere. Twenty-six seventy fifty.
Yeah. Twenty-six hundred bucks, the insurance company's paying us for the loss of the F-150 so much per day. So I think there's gonna be some questions with Scott as to how we have to handle that, but anyway. That's pretty much all I have, unless you guys have any questions.
Uh, I got a comment for you. Uh, earlier this month, we had the uh leadership meeting for partnership Park County, and your name was mentioned in the uh ion.gov stuff and. The only, the only town in the county that's got that so far, so.
Well, they're, they're jumping on board, they're, they're coming in behind us.
I just wanted to let you know that till you, once they figured out what your name was.
Nobody gets dropped the first draft.
Thanks, Neil.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Anything? Okay, we got a couple ordinance lists to take care of. I know. Orders twenty twenty-two dash oh five dash oh one, and that is the adopting the final. That five, that four, five, whatever, six, the implementation plan. We've already talked about, I think it's part of adopting.
Do you want a motion or all of them together?
Yeah, let's do.
Separate.
I'll make a motion, we adopt it. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then we got a. And we have a, a resolution twenty twenty-two oh five oh one that uh we approved the American Rescue Plan Act. For the uh. We've already talked about this, the plan is at the town, right? If you have that plan.
Um, you don't have a plan yet, this is just so because those cubes were ordered and they're gonna have to be put, paid for. So this establishes getting that set up for that.
I'll make a motion to approve the American Rescue Plan Act plan.
Plan. Second.
Second.
On favor?
That's basically, I gave you a copy of it and did kind of extract it. Getting the ball rolling on it. Still gotta do ordinance oh two.
Yeah. And we got ordinance twenty twenty-two dash five dash oh two to adopt that Disability Act Transition Plan.
I'll make a motion for ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh five dash oh two.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
While I was thinking about it, can I speak out of turn on that for you? The uh, I need somebody to give me an answer, a firm answer on the material coming off the water tower. Cause we got two different phone call, Brad got two different phone calls and they're two different answers. Is that material of the town or is it in the contract that that belongs to somebody else? Because they sold the ladder today, the crew working up there sold the ladder to another individual. And the guys called me because they thought it was town property, which I assumed it was. It's all worked out and it's back there now, but I just need an answer as far as, or contact.
I, I would think that.
Who did, who they, when they called Sue as, who did, who did talk to? Brad had to leave early for a family, so I didn't get early. They talked to two different people, so.
Did they get it back?
I just, if it's yours, I'd wanna do the right thing. Town water tower, then them guys up there should not have, or I'm concerned, have the right to sell something. I'm trying to stay out of it, cause. I agree. Yeah.
Did they replace the ladder?
We said that's part of the project, they're putting a new ladder.
I think they're taking it down. The ladder's still on there, it was the cage around the ladder, is what they took off. And it's, it's not going back on, cause I think they're putting a a cable where you hook onto it with your harness and as you walk up, it goes up with you. So. It's something else to keep an eye on, I don't know if anybody's noticed, but there's a lot of property damage around the base of that tower. And I don't know if that's to the contract or not. Better be.
Yeah.
I mean, there's threats, need equal in some places.
Thanks, Neil. Okay, so we got the, the revised, proposed revision of the Community Center Lease Agreement.
Main thing was the deposit amount and then get raised to a hundred from fifty and then with the use of the AV system, it's a hundred and fifty instead of a hundred extra.
Everything else, like you're saying?
I think so. I think he worded a little bit about, in one paragraph, if the building wasn't clean, then.
Yep, thanks, Sean.
Yeah.
So we need a motion to, I'll make a motion to um adopt the revised Community Center Lease.
On favor? Thank you. Okay, you got the, we'll have time to look at it in depth, but the cemetery fees with comparison to the other people in the area.
Why does ours vary from one thirty to four hundred, I don't remember that.
From what?
Probably.
On this, on the residents, one thirty, four hundred dollars.
Because in the older sections at one time, in section A, it was a hundred and thirty per grave, section B was one fifty, C was two hundred. I think that's just how it was set up, is it limp. And then for that, what we thought we had mapped out originally, there he is, I'll let him talk.
Well, not quite yet.
That older section, we'd set VE and F at four hundred per grave, then we had it redone, so now we gotta get all the the other two sections added. I think he was wanting to make sure you didn't wanna raise the gray voting fees or foundation fees. It is.
Mediocre, I mean, like fees are not extravagant one way or the other.
Is there a fee on here for foundation?
Um, I don't think he added that on there, because the old one, our foundations are hundred for a small foundation and one thirty for the large. Small's the thirty-two by twenty and the large is seventy by twenty, uh, two seventy by twenty.
Once you get there, we can go under the Earl Tatum. Uh, lived at one sixty-five North Washington Street, had requested a death, question death child area sign placed on Washington Street to make it safer for her child who is a death. And that, we got a sign, do we have that in order?
That's, when you wait on him.
Oh, we're not moving along.
Well, we're moving backward now.
Ordinance, it just has to be if you're changing the speed limit or something like that, isn't it?
I think so.
But I'm not for sure.
Did you win?
Uh, it wasn't looking good when I left, so. Yeah, but they have indoor courts over there.
Oh, that's what I think you're bringing down, huh?
Yeah, I, sorry, I thought it was gonna be outside and hot, I was inside.
I think we've pretty much got down to, through a lot of stuff, but now we need to. They were discussing that.
Okay.
Cemetery fees.
Yeah, cemetery fees.
Yeah, so I emailed everyone. Yeah, so I emailed everyone last night with comparisons, we just grabbed a few that we could grab easy and tried to be mostly local, La Grange is obvi- it's not, but my quick read, what, your, your lot fees are fairly comparable to everyone else's. The one thirty lots, I, I don't know if you have any of those.
There's none of them.
Yeah, I mean, that's the older sections, the new sections, um, are, are the higher end. But your, your charges for the services, to me, seem lower than a lot of other places, municipals, but it's up to you guys what you, you know, what you wanna do, if you wanna change them or not, so.
You want more time to look there?
You weren't too far off, but you know, you're, you're, I think you were the lowest of anyone for grave openings and, and, uh, so.
The way things are now, it don't look any, I'm sorry, don't look any better for the next couple of years, I don't, I really don't wanna, you know, any more burden on people. That's my feeling, that, at three hundred dollars, it takes them, it'd hard, two guys to dig a grave.
Hello? I'm pretty good with that. I think it's.
Yeah.
Times are tough.
Yeah.
None of these add up.
If we're, if we're breaking even or making a little bit out of, I guess we need to be okay. I was more concerned about the price of concrete and, uh, and the footing for a stone. I think we get more, more than one footing out of yard probably. Do we?
Of a footer? You'd probably get, but, but the thing about it, uh, is it still like that, where minimum of four yards?
Yeah, minimum of four yards where you get charged like seventy-five dollar fee.
So it's a hundred and fifty dollars a yard, so if you got two or three foundations to pour, it would make more sense to buy a bag and mix it yourself.
Yeah.
At a hundred and fifty bucks a, a yard and a, a minimum of four yards? There, yeah. Maybe that's something, yeah, they need to look at. Instead of waiting to get six, seven, eight of them like we used to, maybe we start getting one or two, then, you know, go buy.
We are pouring just two before Memorial Day.
They can.
They have offered to pay the difference in the charge because it needs to be done without going into too much elaboration.
Yeah, but they can go buy.
I'll pay the difference out of my pocket, well.
Why would you wanna pay six hundred dollars?
It's a long story.
I'm just saying, you know.
I don't know if Brad will be back tomorrow, cause the family got called in this afternoon, the grandmother.
Oh yeah.
So you could just do it that way.
Yeah, they can stick a little rebar in, make sure it's gonna hold and whatever, or a piece of old fence or something, but I'm figuring if they're, if they're small ones, hell, five bags.
Yeah.
At twenty-five dollars a bag, I mean, for the five bags, even if you go buy it from Ace. Yeah, it's, it's.
So you're saying if there's just a couple, don't wait till we get that many?
No, I wouldn't, not nowadays, not with.
With the price or whatever, because of how much you have to order.
It's crazy. Now, if you had sidewalk to pour with it or something like that, that would, that would make sense, but no, I mean we, it didn't used to be a problem.
Right, yeah, and they could.
And even when they come out of Clinton, they, they just weren't that crazy, but these new companies are taking over and, yeah.
It's good to live. I think the prices are about right and I think we should definitely, uh, try to get around that, uh, minimum on it, cause I, I had a side, I had a driveway done two years back and I know how much that costs, now it's two years ago and that's gonna be a lot more now.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we can do it ourselves, we do two, three at a time.
Okay.
Concrete's concrete.
Yeah. Alrighty.
Well, I'll, I'll go ahead and, I just, we'll do the ordinance for the next meeting that opens up those, officially opens up those new sections, but I, before we did that, I thought I'd ask about the price and see if we were changing. We will leave it as be.
Okay, the, the next question for you, Scott, is. We get it.
I was hoping I'd drive by in the parking lot with you.
Just try.
We've got a request from somebody down on, around one sixty-five North Washington Street, wanting a question death child area signed it up. We don't, we, that's not an ordinance or anything.
No, no, there's no, um, fine or anything unless you wanted to change the speed limit or do something like that in that area, otherwise it's just a, it's just a.
Is that something they could do?
Uh, we should do it because it's our street that we're telling people to, to be, uh, caution, extra caution on.
Part of our.
And, and yes, it is timing, uh, I, I was driving through Brazil on, on the way over to Greencastle, I noticed a spot where there was one of those signs and I had a nephew or a cousin who was deaf and he, they had that sign at, at by his house and there are all these, they're kind of a big, uh.
I've Googled some of them, some of them just say, slow death child.
They had these, uh.
Caution.
They had these that looked like the old signs, kinda do a squ- shape.
Like a diamond.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, that one's still on Miles Alley, isn't it?
Is there one on somebody's in town?
Yeah, there's one up there, it used to be.
Miles Alley?
Well, there is one there, I don't know, I don't know if we put it up or not.
I don't know either, there's one there.
Yeah, I think we did. I believe somebody asked us to do that.
Oh yeah.
Yes.
So do you put one for traffic coming this way, that way?
Yes.
Make a motion with those signs.
Second.
Say it.
Hi.
Okay. My knee actually has a death dog, if you're accountable for that signs.
A dead dog?
I did check into, uh, the digital speed signs for, that was one of the areas that I had targeted in my mind. Uh, I've had two cars this week that were cited over fifty mile an hour on Washington Street South of thirty-six, but it's a racetrack down there, doing the best we can, but the signs that I had quoted, you know, they flash and you've, everybody's probably seen in that room, they're forty-five hundred dollars a piece.
You'd stop more people.
Probably not.
Okay, uh, next thing, the list Brad had, his grandmother was very ill. Wish him and his family the best. Bailey attended the training for the expo in Huntington, Indiana. When he was training, he paid the fee of ninety-five dollars to the bucket instead of getting information for us to issue a check. We need approval for that reimbursement. Says he doesn't want reimbursed for the market because he drove his personal vehicle instead of town truck, because his wife went with him, and.
So, how do you feel about that, because I.
I.
On reimbursing?
Yeah.
And if he wants to drive it, one person vehicle?
Yeah.
We really couldn't have been without one, could we? I guess we could've.
I mean, I, I just couldn't take it on vehicle all the time, but that's me.
Especially if your spouse goes with you.
Yeah. So reimbursing, I mean.
Do you need motion or just? Motion to re- reimburse?
Probably do it, cause he's getting money, the state board might look for it.
I know.
I'd motion, yeah.
Did it for a second.
On paper?
Aye, aye, aye.
It's quite over, folks. Okay, Napa needs approval to attend the Alliance of Indiana Opera Expo, May twenty-sixth in Hacken, Indiana, and the fee is ninety-five dollars for that.
I'll make a motion.
Say it.
On paper?
Aye, aye.
And the next one is about the testified applicator classes at Purdue. They're all booked till June twenty-eighth. Do online classes for a fee of a hundred and ten dollars and go take the test anytime. And, uh, we gotta get the sprayer tested if we do, but, uh, what is it, the classes if they go to Purdue, the cost?
Um, I think it, I don't even remember, when Donnie went, seventy-five, close to that, I think, which that might be more now, I don't think it's on that.
Well, if we could get them tested and done sooner, we're gonna need to because. The mosquito grow, yeah.
Yeah.
If they can do it online up there, it's fine.
And get them spraying.
Well, we're like, if they take the test, do they do that on, if they do class online?
Training registration is now a hundred and three dollars, for the online course, it's a hundred and ten.
And the test is online too?
No, they'll have to go to Purdue for the testing, but they can go anytime.
They just can't get into a class. I'd say if you do the online.
Yeah.
Hey Kathy, that test, is it, can it be taken at the annex building or is that the actually at?
That I don't know.
Might be a question.
And Don, I know, Donnie always had to. And Donnie always had to go to Lafayette, but he did the classes and then the test that day, same day, I think.
We could ask to see if they could do it where Kurt could be the proctor there though, if they didn't have to travel that far. I don't know if it's an option, but it's something to look into.
Can I have a motion for him to do it online?
Well, I'm still here.
Aye.
Cover the fee, keeps state board accounts happy.
Take a motion.
Say it.
On paper?
Aye.
And where is the sprayer get tested?
Urbana, it's Urbana.
It's gotta go to Illinois.
Outside of Urbana, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, somewhere up, I, they changed it since I've been up there.
Probably, that probably Eli over there, that it.
Do what?
You know, they're killing, I probably don't know that. I mean, it's going to Champaign-Urbana, makes sense, but it's a Cal College too.
No, this is Mugga, Muggabug does this, a company that, we get the mosquito spray off of, also has, has to okay the machine.
The Vion Fleck of HWC needs to meet with Brad and Newell's Utilities in order to get the streets prioritized for the application going on in community crossings. That, May twenty-fifth at nine, that'd be.
Excellent.
You know, I. I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I am too.
Nine o'clock.
That's at the utility office.
Yeah.
Well, we, you'd be busy. Okay, and Kathy's got another quote for Florida on a community center from Stanley Steamer, waiting on one other quote, but hadn't received that yet, so. Yeah, the lights at the small ball diamond, boys diamond are finished.
I didn't have it on your list, but there's an email in there I received about the ARP money, and the treasury hopes that you continue to support expanding workforce, providing competitive wages, extending access to affordable housing, and keeping our families and communities safe through public safety. I stuck that in there.
Look like they've been writing.
Paul?
Yeah, one thing I thought Don was bringing up, uh, we got a phone call from Tom Milligan, who's from Leaven County Trails Alliance group. And they're insisting on putting bollards, bollards, however you say it, at the bridge on the bottom of the side, and I guess they've talked to John and they talked to Kurt and, uh, and I guess the fee is gonna be associated with remaining county due, so, I guess.
It's the bollards at the end?
Our, our side of it is.
Why?
What is it?
Well, for access.
Emergency.
Emergency, if somebody was to pass out or something, they can take a, uh, four wheeler or something across there to get somebody on the other side. And the bollards would be locked at the bottom, key lock or combination lock where they could be taken off and tipped over there.
I'm sorry, I didn't bring that up, I actually forgot about it.
But anyway.
There are forty inches in between each bollard, which would allow an RTV or a four wheeler that has capacity to put a backboard on it to, in case somebody got down on the other side of the bridge, and this is the only way they're gonna be able to get to there.
What do you got down there right now? You got more than forty inches now, don't you?
Um, no.
Then scoot it over an inch. I mean, I don't understand what's wrong with what we got down there, it's been working for how many years?
Eight, I know.
So, I don't know.
Yeah. And they're, it's their expense, they're willing to incur all the expenses, that it wouldn't mean any expense to any of us. And they're, they're gonna put the locking, um, cap down at the bottom, I think Paul Scotting talked into using a combination lock so we don't have to chase down a key. And, uh, then there'd just be two, so they could have enough room to get. Yeah, we explained to him that those were not just concrete bumper pads, that those, those are concrete benches, just like that, the model boys.
So I guess I'm not understanding what they're wanting to quit.
For the five hundred racetrack.
Across there.
Are you talking about the?
The opening at the bridge.
Right, they go down and they'll lock in, but if we need to get, have emergency, somebody transport it out, they can lift them out, move them, they can drive on to go over to the other side.
Well, why do all that if you only need another damn inch though? Well, I'm just saying.
I know.
But it's not, it's hard.
It's something for us to maintain though.
Keep traffic going is.
I, I think if we give it too much room, then we'll have quad areas.
Well, that's, I'm wanting motorcycles crossing or.
A motorcycle can go through there now.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, just let me know, that's, you want me to have you come to the meeting?
I can.
And the commissioners can, please go off towards the park board.
Did he go to commissioners meeting?
Yeah, we made him go, we told him, you have to go, cause we, it's not our choice, it's their choice.
You got a picture of it?
Well, I don't.
Wouldn't you say the commissioners have pushed it off?
That's probably not what you want there.
Oh, yes. Hey Kathy, that's another question. Would you be able to dig up the contract the town signed with the commissioners about the railroad bridge? Because I don't, I specifically remember when we signed that contract, in fact, because I remember Alan saying out loud, now the town will not be liable for any, anything on that bridge.
I do, I have a note on my desk, cause you asked me at the last meeting, I didn't get a chance to try to pull it out yet and look at it.
Would you do that for us?
I don't know if I have it.
I have it down on my desk.
Chris might have it too.
Yeah, we definitely have one.
I specifically remember Alan asking that question out loud and they said, no, the town will not be held liable or responsible. I remember that, so they promised us that we would not be, now then we're kinda rolling back.
I'll get it out and email you a copy.
Okay, that'd be great.
That's all I got.
Way to go, Paul.
Stirred it up and up?
Yes.
Well, the commissioners keep pushing it back on us.
Well, I know, I got in the middle of that.
Yeah.
Discussion there with asking about repairing the.
And talking to Tom Milligan, he says, your town cops all forward and I'm.
I struggled when we were talking about it. I struggle when we were talking about it, but I, I'd have to look back.
Yeah. I talked to Kurt, Kurt says, get me a key, I want a key.
Yeah.
I can't wait, Kurt. Is that you? So, helpful for that.
Okay, uh, we've talked about this several times, setting up a meeting for, to talk about the money that we gotta divvy up. Might as well go ahead and get that set up and do it.
Well.
For the plan, I guess, is what we gotta have.
Yes, that, and I was telling you, the fund report, where we recoup that money in gas. You need to look at that and see if you wanna take some of it back in investments or, and it is budget season approaching. So you might wanna make it a financial meeting all the way around.
Is there any time better for other people? 'Cause you're going on retirement here for long, aren't you?
Mm-hmm. I have.
So, I.
Four more days.
I know, you know, I don't. I can call about any time, whatever works for. I guess, probably Scott's got the busy schedule getting at us.
Well, I just wanna, I mean, just about the ten, the next projects meeting, or we could, um.
Set that for that.
Two weeks away, right, so.
Set that for, to specifically talk about that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do that, Cameron.
Okay.
Seventh, right?
The second.
Second.
Seventy-two.
June second.
You're way ahead.
July. I was hoping.
I was like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, are you meeting early or are you meeting right in your time?
I'll tell you what, late at time, dude.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Should take.
We just need to kinda go through, what do you want, what do we need to pay for? Here's the places we can pay for it from, and probably be good too, 'cause you guys will have met to talk about community crossings between now and then, so we can talk about.
Six o'clock and the second for that one.
Also, um, wouldn't it probably be a good idea for the fire department and the police department to be there so they can?
I'll be in the Bahamas on the seventh.
Oh, that's right.
Second.
On the second?
Second, no, I'll be here on the second.
Oh, no, yeah. June second.
Tell her he schedules.
June second, but that way we have idea of what we're.
What expenses that is.
Looking into for the budget.
Everybody okay with that? And the regular meeting will be the sixteenth?
Sixteenth.
Sean?
I don't have anything.
Nate?
Nope.
Kathy?
Scott, did you already do the lease and the, all that stuff, ARP plan?
Yes, and I think on the lease, was it just the rental fee?
Yeah, there was already something in there, I think we, maybe, maybe added something that, I think it already said that you have to follow the rules when we. But I, if it didn't already say something, we, we said if you don't clean up, we reserve the right to.
Right.
Not refuse to you again, a- and, and not rent to you.
And not rent to you again, yeah.
So, um, I think, if that wasn't already in there, we added it, it may have been in there, but we did increase the rent just a little bit. I'm in.
If anybody's got any idea of anybody that you think may be interested in taking over the cleaning of this, please bring their name forward. Or give it to Kathy, that's.
I wanna try to find somebody without having to advertise for it, because I think that'll be more of a burden for you guys. Know what I mean?
Yeah. I don't find anybody. I think Kathy would just get the, sound like, find contact down.
I'm hanging in there, but my hips aren't what they used to be. From up forward. And we also passed the.
Yeah, I.
Title six and ABN.
I feel, yeah, I finally figured that you must have got it through all that stuff, but I.
Yeah.
Must start asking.
Okay, you wanna go ahead and hang out?
About the property?
Cindy's got some.
Were you gonna ask Scott about researching the property?
Oh, that, that property thing, the, for the.
Oh.
The, the, the thing right there?
Uh, I, I'm gonna have to dig, I, I haven't looked at it. I just looked on the GIS map and, and it showed the boundary. Now, the GIS map could be wrong too, so I need to look at the, there's some ordinances the town has that establish its boundaries and I would study them, so. But it did look to me when I looked at the map like it was west, just, or east, but it kinda cut through the middle of, of that lot over there, on the map.
So none of it, what's been built and everything is?
No, parts of it were, but, but again, that map could have been wrong. I, I, I looked that evening and I couldn't rep, I couldn't get it to pull it up again, so I don't, maybe I just messed up. I'll look at the ordinances, that will answer the question. There, there's no residences, I don't know if the people over, over here, if they're registered, you know, if they vote in town elections.
I think they do.
I don't know.
No, well, we annexed that, is that right?
No, we annexed down by the treatment plant.
Yeah, down there.
But, but there's nobody lives down there, uh, or Ron kinda does.
If they live outside corporate limits, that line right there, they shouldn't be registered with the town.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, I, but I, I, I just, I had looked it up on the evening you first emailed about the senior housing, I kinda pulled it up and was looking at it, and it showed this boundary, and I was like, well, wait a minute, it's not even in the town. I mean, the road is, and it went back, but, but it showed the line kinda going, kinda really through the duplexes back there. I thought, wow. I never thought, I was kinda mad at myself, I never even thought of that before, I just assumed that was all, all that was in town. And it very well may be, I will, I will look again and see if I can.
So can it be annexed then?
With consent of the people who own it, it can be. It would be very hard to do it without their consent.
I see.
And it's still a big mess, I mean, even when we did it on our own property that we owned, there's all these notices and, I mean, it would be worthy of doing, I think, probably, but let me find out if it's a problem or not.
Okay, it's kinda like the cemetery, you know, I had asked one time about getting that annexed.
Well, it, it's a lot of trouble, and it, it, the state's made it extremely hard to do annexes, it's very hard. And there's all this process and notices, even if it's strictly voluntary, it's still hard. Now, I don't think these units are taxable, I think I looked at that. I don't think they pay property taxes with the tax incentive, so it doesn't add to your property tax base to bring it in.
I see.
But if those folks live there and are paying town utilities and, and so forth, and it would seem appropriate that they have a chance to vote.
Sure.
I was saying, if they're getting town utilities, wouldn't they have to incorporate into our town?
No.
There's outside.
That's a completely different jurisdiction thing. That will be applied if.
Yeah, we don't wanna mess that boundary up. I'll let you know.
That's kinda one too, that is, several threats running around from people. Have I got anything else?
Make a motion with adjourned.
Say it.